Okay, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, this is our regular session of the City Council. We just came out of a work section that was, the public could participate in. Again, it's the sixteenth of May and it's ten after six. We'll go ahead and open this meeting. I've asked Zach Lovell to come give us the opening.
Dear and Father, pray so that we can, as citizens of the City Council and the City staff, that we can, that we're productive City Councilmen. And, Father, pray so that we can argue upon working together, being unified, and pray so that when the time comes for us to go home safely, that we can be home safely, and pray so our families wherever they may be, that they can be safe and protected. Grateful for their wonderful staff that we have as serves the City and grateful for City Council that we have, and pray so for all the time and efforts they put in, and the City staff as well. In the name of the Lord, the Savior's name, Jesus Christ the Lord.
The General, I'll lead this one. I pledge.
Please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to see the consent agenda and the discussion on the consent agenda. Anybody want to make any corrections to the minutes or anything? Okay, if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda for May second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. We'll go ahead and vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll move on to D, petitions. Public forum, anyone can speak on any items that are not on the agenda. Time limit is three minutes, less if needed. We'll go, first of all, with staff reports. Have any staff that would like?
You want the public first, public forum?
Oh, yes, go ahead, public forum. Sorry, I'm learning. Anyone from the public that they'd like to come up and speak with us?
Yes, we're on.
You're on, you can, so we'll get to you.
Okay.
Okay, liking anybody from the public, we'll go ahead and go to staff.
Mayor's and Council can update of the first sixteen days of the month here. We've had thirty-five arrests, sixty-four offenses, sixty-five citations, resulted into six violations, five hundred and thirty-one calls for service, two DUIs, one hundred and thirteen traffic stops, and twelve traffic accidents. We're off to a run start. My only thing else I have is, just to remind everybody, the activities that are on Saturday. We have the Anytime Fitness 5K. At Anytime Fitness is a fundraiser. We have, I don't know, someone else might bring these up. The Walter Brown Half Marathon is also on Saturday, so we'll see a lot of us out in the next, well, every weekend until September third, actually.
Is that Walter Brown? Walter?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either.
I'm not sure either.
Carl, Mayor, Jeanine may have more information on that, but...
What did he say? I'm sorry, he can't...
I don't want to ask how many questions for him.
Probably so. I know that with that one at Anytime Fitness, the City is supporting that in chairs and tables and...
Yeah, you can come dunking officer probably too, if you...
Oh.
The newest guy.
Anytime Fitness. Glad I'm not an officer anymore.
The mayor too.
Speaking of dunking, the pool has passed its last inspection today, so we'll be ready to open. And on the runs and triathlons, the junior high triathlon is this Friday afternoon. And the junior high comes in and does that each year, so we're excited for them to do that as well. As well, we've been working, Jeanine's been working hard with the Tour of Utah. She's recruited April, who's reached out to the schools and with some programs as well. One of the programs that they've come up with is the Payson City and Tour of Utah Summer of Fun, so maybe going right along with our theme, Passport to Adventure. We've created these little passports, areas to stamp in the back, and you can snap your selfie with your passport with the logo, or get the stamp at the various locations. On the front, we kind of have some things, the grottoes, Spring Lake Devil's Kitchen, Memorial Park. Inside, there's things, you know, come to the library for a summer session, or the pool, or... We've listed about fifteen or twenty places to attend, and then if they do ten of those, they'll be entered into a drawing, which Walmart's donated a bicycle for, that we'll give out at the Tour of Utah. As well, we will give them a day pass at the pool. We'll invite them to come to the Tour of Utah and redeem that day pass. And then with that, hopefully, they'll bring their families and others to the pool as well. So for those interested, we have some passports here tonight, and then you can also go on the webpage and get those passports, and they are being distributed to all the schools as well this week. Thank you.
Do you have any shorts right now?
Yeah, absolutely. And while Carl's doing that, he may know more about this, but our insurance company came by today and gave us a plaque. It's called the Aquatic Examiner Service with the American Red Cross, and Carl may know more about it, but we participate with the Red Cross in doing some training with our pool employees and trying to be as safe as we can, and they brought this plaque down for us participating in that. So I'll get that to Carl and put it up in our Aquatics Center. Right? Do you have any additional... Basically, they come three times a year and do a kind of a secret shopper audit, and they'll actually film our guards and watch them. They'll also quiz them under film, knowing they're being filmed at that point. We'll do it again this year. It was in conjunction with the Trust as well as the American Red Cross, just to help us stay at the standard that we want to be at. And so we're grateful to receive the award and be doing that, and we'll do it again this year.
Can I ask a quick question on the passport here?
Yep.
Have you printed them all?
I believe we have.
Yes, and they're...
Did you have a first copy or a second copy?
No. Is my, do I get extra, is it worth more if they don't have a first copy?
Well, the first edition... I had some other editions in there. I'm hoping you have the final...
I know, I was just gonna have you add something to it, but...
Good idea for next year. That'd be great.
Team Payson, we've been hitting it pretty hard.
And I think...
If they did Team Payson and they posted their picture, it's advertising for the City.
Well, we could put that on the lab, the next flyer or something. Yeah, we'll put that on the website and we'll put it on the other flyer for the summer activities if we can still do that.
Well, we haven't put out the ones for the library and City Center or here. Wait.
Give them an extra entry or something if they post a picture of them doing one of these activities in Payson with the hashtag.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the idea, the snap or stamp, either one. But we can tell them to put it on Team Payson. That's what we can instruct them, and we'll do that on the webpage as well as the main...
We can actually change our main flyer.
We can change the main flyer.
Why, so that's spend more money than...
And get it on there as well.
Because the stamp is just right here, and it doesn't go out to the community or neighboring communities to change the perception of the Pearson and Alpine, that we're not just drug dealers in Payson.
Okay.
That's, sorry, that's from our previous conversation.
If you had email maybe something to me to real quick in the morning, then maybe we can get something done by tomorrow, so, because we're putting them out tomorrow.
We started today, but...
We actually have half, so...
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Carl.
All right, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to thank Linda especially for coming to D-Val Mariachi.
Thank you.
The last time I get to say that without messing that up. Anyway, I thought it was a huge success. I, we counted around six hundred people. It was really fun, talented group of people who put that on, so that was very successful. We'll definitely do it again next year. We'll probably add Smart Feed vendors, there were long lines all night long, those vendors. And Doug once, you know, always invited to our meetings for the Tour of Utah, if you need suggestions.
Well, half the time, they're like in the middle of the day.
I know.
Like teach school.
But what, you know, I'm just saying.
I would love to.
That's what they're for.
I'd love to.
I'm pretty sure you're getting laid off in a week and a half.
You're right. You'll see more of the reason you'd like to see in about a week and a half.
That's awesome. All right, what else? Memorial Day. And I said that with a smile too. All right, so Memorial Day, hope we all be in town before you take off. Nine thirty at the cemetery, we always have a very nice program, so you're all invited. Mayor, especially you, because you're conducting.
Okay.
Oh, nine thirty, Memorial Day, yes, Monday, twenty...
That is always good.
Twenty, yes.
Twenty-six.
Sorry. Twenty-eight, sorry, twenty-nine.
Thanks, Jeanine. Any other staff? If not, we'll move on to council. Councilwoman, Ty, you have anything to report?
I just wanted to thank Kent for how quickly he got that dirt moved. That looks very nice, and anyone else who's involved.
And he did it cheaper than we could have, or than...
Yes.
This is something that I'd probably normally address individually, but I saw it today, and I already talked to Chief Bishop about it, but it would be nice to have some sort of loitering ordinance for downtown Main Street. We have more and more people there, and it looked like a camp of homeless people, and we like to take care of them, but probably not on the breezeway right next to the library. So if we could maybe look at that and look if we need to change our ordinances. And then I appreciate, even though I can't make any of your meetings, I'm really excited for the Tour of Utah, and I appreciate all the work that everybody's putting into that. And I'm excited for the branding study. I wish I would have known about the committee, and would have been invited to that, but I'm really excited for what we have going on.
Okay, let me take a little bit of time. I was invited with the Southern County Mayors, well, actually, the three Mayors of Spanish Fork, Salem, well, four, San Quentin and Payson. We were briefed about the Central Utah Water Project, how it's coming along, and it is coming along, and it's quite exciting to anticipate the possibilities of using that water as we grow. So just wanted to let everybody know that I did attend that meeting, and it is coming along quite well.
I just want to thank Jeanine again. That was a wonderful night at the Teetneed. And she lives in our city that had all of the entertainment, and it was great. I enjoyed it so much, and there were a lot of people there that were enjoying it also, and a lot of people that came from out of town to enjoy it. So I really appreciate Jeanine, and Jeanine, I'm not working now, I can come to the meetings.
Yeah, just a couple of things here. One is, I'm gonna pass out a report, and we'll get this on the website, but just to the council and the mayor. It's called a Buxton Report, it's called a leakage report, and what it is, it shows what kind of retail we have in Payson, and what our potential sales are, and what the estimated sales are. So like, if you look at automobile dealership, we have an estimated sales of five million in Payson, but our potential is forty-nine million, so it shows that we're missing out on forty-five million in sales in Payson. So if you go through all the different categories, it's just really interesting. About the only one that we really do well is beer, wine, and liquor sales. We, estimated sales is the ten million, and we, our potential's two and a half, so we do really well in beer, wine, and liquor, so. Anyway, we'll put this on the website, so people will look at it. The other thing I'm excited about is there's three businesses down downtown that are putting together a downtown coalition, Ashley Guy, and Ty, and Thor, and so they're starting to put that together, and so we're getting out some downtown people that want to do something downtown, so I'm really excited about that.
I'd like to reiterate what Doug said about the kind of the transient, like, I was down at Walmart the last couple of times I've been down there. There's some, some people, I mean, they're probably falling on hard times, but just kind of keep an eye out for that, that's what I don't want to come known for as well. And then on the same note, I'm getting a lot of complaints from people about like abandoned vehicles in front of houses and yards and things like that. I says, send an email, notify somebody, but if you see some, don't hesitate to start to cite some of those, because there's a lot of them out there. And I think I'm good, thanks.
You know, just on the, on that subject, I've received a few, and I've worked with the chief, and he's went out, I know, to two or three or four places that we've talked about, so we're actively trying to, trying to do that. Also, on the loitering issue, you know, there are some challenges, law enforcement wanted of doing that. I don't know that we can do a ordinance that goes against the stated law, but we certainly can, as the chief, I'm sure, will do, have a presence there more so than not. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. We do not have any scouting attendance that I can see, so we'll dispense with that, and we'll go to number four, presentation of the Guardian Award. Come on up, guys. Wow us, please.
It's scary.
It's scary, yeah.
Blind with it, it's brutal.
Mayor, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to...
You all need, oh, okay.
Bertus, Bertus is here as a former mayor, as a chieftain, and also once, one-time member of the Scottish Festival Committee. So we're, we represent the class nineteen sixty-seven, and...
Tell the suite of ours.
Well, my name is Howard Nick. I don't live here anymore, I live up in Lake, but I never had any problems with the police department. Billy and I play baseball every day, so, anyways...
He's down here a lot, though. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, yes, Linda and I get together every now and then, so there's people in here. Anyways, we've created this award, it's called the Guardian Award, and I, did you put out the product? So everybody's had the little readout on it, so we don't want to take up too much, so we're gonna make this presentation. Nolan Davidson represents the past reunion chair for the fiftieth anniversary of our graduation, and Gary Schwartz will be the one for next year, two thousand and twenty-two. And there will be the presenters, and Nolan is gonna present you with the trophy award, and Bertus will present you with the, I mean, I'm sorry, Gary will present Bertus as a former mayor with the plaque. And the first person on that plaque that we're honoring is Kent Rock. And if anybody knew Kent Rock, he was a behind-the-scenes type person. You never saw him up front, never got all the accolades, but if you ever needed anybody to, to help you with anything, he was always there. And he passed away just a few days before our fiftieth graduation reunion, so we're gonna honor him, so. We're presenting these to the City. You can hang on to them for about a month, and then you guys, you and Bertus, will be presenting them to the Scottish Committee before we have the festival this year, so we'll work that time out, so, okay? All right, that's all we've got, right there, so go ahead. Class of sixty-seven, may we present the Guardian Award.
Thank you very much.
This thing is heavy as a rock. That's because it is a rock.
Thanks.
I did. Turn around, Mayor.
I'd say, this rock, tell them about it. Tell them about the rock.
The big rock underneath is a rock from my third great-grandfather's estate home, which was called Gordy Hill, and I am a descendant, direct descendant of, the statue on the white rock there is Robert de Bruce, and I'm a direct descendant of Robert de Bruce, and William Wallace is right. The Guardianship was called the Guardians, the Guardian, they were called the Guardian Protectors of Scotland, and they basically were the ones who established the constitutional government that would later follow them in Scotland. And the big rock comes from, like I said, from Gordy Hill, from my third great-grandfather's, and the purple one up there represents the, what they call the Stone of Destiny, which used to be a schoolhouse, and is now a minister. The English King Edward the First stole the stone and took it to London, and, but it was where, for over a thousand years, the kings and queens of England were, were and still are today crowned and anointed as, as kings and queens. And so, basically, that's, and that's the definition. I didn't plan on making that, but, anyways, we just put, we just put it together and figured that we'd like to have a way of helping to raise money and stuff, and that's what the Guardianship's gonna do.
But what I'll do is I'll keep it in my office, that's okay, until you need it.
Yeah. And we'll get with, we'll get with the committee and make a separate presentation.
I'd just like to state while we're here, Howard Mayor, Howard Howard's worked on this, he approached us at the end of the reunion and talked a little bit about a monument and award that he put in the Teetneed Academy, and it's evolved into this award, hopefully it'll carry on for many years in the City, and Howard put a lot of time and money and effort into this, so thank you, Howard.
I also have a tree.
Linda knows about the tree, and that will be planted up at the Teetneed School, I'm working with Ray Lutz on that, and it's gonna be a memorial tree for those that have passed on from our class in nineteen sixty-seven. It's a giant croye by the way.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public forum and move on to action items E. Resolution to deferral agreement to delay installation of sidewalks along Spring Creek Drive. Daniel, I guess you're up.
I'm up. This person's really quick. So Tri-State is coming into the business park right there on American Way, and they are installing Kirtbetter Sidewalk as requested, or as required, along American Way, but along the street to the right, Seventeen Hundred West, what was formerly called Seventy Hundred West. They've requested that it be delayed, and so in the agreement, we have a clause that it can be delayed up to five years, or whenever the parcel is developed on the north, whichever comes first. So five-year max delay here, and that's just based on, there's nothing else on that street. So it seems to make a lot of sense for us, and they're complying with the other departments. So that's the gist of what's in that deferral agreement. I don't know if there are questions about that.
My only question is how often do these things fall through the crack, and they don't get put in because we forget?
That would be Ken. I don't know. I'm inclined to say never, never since I've been here.
Not long now, man. That's a perfect record.
We can record some title. We can put a notice in Travis's calendar, something in Ken's calendar, I don't know.
My only concern is that it gets done, because I think there's lots of things that we recorded to be done that don't always get done.
So are you requiring a bond for this, so?
I think we're, we're deferring the performance guarantee as well, that's, yeah, that's my understanding of this, I'm not really through all, but yeah, so the performance guarantee's deferred as well.
Is there a mechanism to keep it from falling through the crack?
Can we put a lien on the property?
If it doesn't get done, yes. So there are provisions in here for us to go and perform the work if they do not perform the work, and then you get reimbursed for the work done. In terms of something that's gonna alert the City employees that five years passed and this hasn't occurred...
Development tracking software is gonna be good.
Yeah, we had a great tracking software, and there's a plaque.
We improved that two years ago.
We did.
I think from my standpoint, it sounds like we've got enough safeguards, we just gotta make sure we stay on top of it, right?
So is the reason we did put a performance bond in here, so that we know the money is, something is there to take care of this, if they don't do it, otherwise it's just...
They'd have to sit there for several years. I don't know what our history, like, our past experience has been with that, with requiring it now when it's gonna sit there for several years.
Normally, we haven't required a deposit, especially when it's undeveloped property to the...
Is it still a dirt road?
No, no.
It is paved?
Well, it's dirt after, after the red line, it's dirt.
After the red line?
Yeah, so, so, you know, when that sells, and then somebody puts in their bill, so they'll have to put the sidewalk in.
All I know is sometimes it's hard to collect money from people after they don't have to do something, that's my, that's my biggest concern.
Any further discussion?
I just make sure it's on the paperwork somehow, that when someone who's in their bills and who's doing that road, they're gonna have to put it in there. I mean, it has to be on their paperwork so that by law, they have to put it in.
And this is, this agreement is designed to be filed against the property and followed with it, and so anybody, if they were to purchase property, we know that that's an obligation that's there. It also, purchasing of the property, you would also trigger that, put it in. Those type of things are in that agreement.
Yes, there's any improvement, modification, or land use application that's submitted, and it's not just on that lot, it's the entire Spring Creek Drive, so not just the lots in the north, but it could also be the lots in the west. And then, of course, five years max.
I think what we're trying to decide, what we're doing with our master plan, what's going on out there and everything, I think it's beneficial to pause if possible, as long as we've got our safeguards in place.
You're gonna have to have a sidewalk there no matter what.
Right, but it depends on what they put back there, just what size road, you know what I mean, some of that might change.
Right, roads different in the sidewalk, so.
Are we ready for a motion? I am, if you aren't. But if you are, that's great.
I would make the motion that we defer, pass the resolution deferring the... I would make the motion that we defer past the resolution deferring the agreement to delay installation of the sidewalk along Spring Creek Drive, provided that Travis puts an outlook warning on his calendar three years from now saying, "Don't push on the sidewalk."
I second that.
Yes, then moved in that motion and seconded. Whether this calls for a roll call, vote, starting with, could I make a comment? Yes, go ahead.
I would like to put it, if I was doing the motion, I'd like to put something in. I don't see it in here. That has, something may have to be tied to the property. I just don't see it in this... Man, I'm missing something. I don't see it in the resolution, so...
Is there language time?
Are you saying in the agreement or just in the motion?
Well, so, is it in the agreement then that that language is in there?
It's gonna be attached to the property.
Yeah, it's attached to the parcel.
It's hard to see, but right here, it indicates that this space is for the recorder, and that is the county recorder where all property acquisitions in the county are filed. And so, they will stamp it here and send it back to Payson City. So, it's designed, the whole document is designed to file against the property. It has a property description along with parcel number on it, so it'll be attached directly to that parcel. So, as you buy and sell, you have to have a title report done. It will be in that line of documents, it's a title report.
Okay, great, thanks. So, the motion that we made covers, is that right? And it's been seconded, so we can move on to the votes. Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to number two, ordinance, amendments to Title 19 zoning ordinance. Daniel, you're up again.
Great. First one, flag poles, we're just two today, but flag poles is in addition to the ordinance in that currently, flag poles are exempted. So, we have an exemption in the commercial areas under the sign ordinance. It just says flag poles are exempted from regulation under the current sign ordinance. And then, in the residential zones, it's silent, so we don't have any regulations. The concern with that is large flags, how do we regulate them? From a building code standpoint, we don't want them collapsing on people. And where in the city would we like to see, or would we be okay with somebody putting a very large flag versus where would we not? So, with Planning Commission, we discussed this over multiple meetings. And the result was the proposed language here, so that it could be a new code, 19.9.24. And it gives the parameters of what a flag is, defines the flag, and then it gives a maximum height of 35 feet, is a blanket maximum height with some exceptions. So, those exceptions being the I-1 and I-2 zones, those are our two industrial zones, the S-1, which is the highway commercial zone, and then the BPD, that's that business park development zone along American Way, as well as any school or public facility. Again, any other place could have 35 feet and shorter, but in those zones, it could go, or schools or public facilities can go above 35 feet with no maximum height. However, it would require engineer design and a permit fee. We'd require a permit for flags under 35 feet. A permit that would explain how it's gonna be secured and fastened and whatnot, but we won't require a fee for a small, you know, 20-foot or 15-foot residential flag. And then, in section, or paragraph three, right there, the flag poles should not be located in a manner that may cause a safety hazard, may not extend beyond the property line, like the flag itself may not extend beyond the property line, if the flag's extended. And then, the definition of flag. And so, that was what we've come up with through several discussions with Planning Commission. There was a lot of debate, and this was the resolution. So, do we have questions about concerns about this language, or questions about why this language?
Yeah, I was just wondering why, what precipitated this? Why did it come up?
We have had a couple businesses ask about flags. One of them in particulars is in the BPD zone and wants to have a large flag. And we realized we have no code that addresses it. So, we have no way to address safety, security. We weren't sure if it was consistent with the zoning ordinance and the planning, the land use goals of Payson to allow such a large flag the applicant wanted. I don't know the exact height, but a very large flag. And so, at Planning Commission, we discuss, do we want to see this in the BPD zone or the industrial zones along the freeway? And the response was, in these limited zones, which are more along the freeway, have good visibility, and aren't as residential, let's go higher. And if it works out great, maybe we can expand it into maybe a general commercial zone or something else, but for now, let's keep it somewhat limited.
Is someone...
I was wondering about residential zones, the type of flags that are allowed.
We had a lot of discussion about that as well.
I've gotten a number of calls about one flag that's waving.
So, it's limited, flag poles solely to display state, national, or other civic flags as permitted in all zones. And there was some discussion of, well, what about a civic flag? Or how do we classify a state or national flag? Can it be a current state or current nation? Does it need to be a real one versus a fictional? Or what would those kinds of things mean? And ultimately, they decided to stick with this language and test it out. But if we have concerns, I think it's worth talking about.
Yeah.
That was kind of my question too, is like, there's freedom of speech, but is there anything restricting to flying a giant 50-foot flag, it's a Jolly Roger?
It's going across.
Right. So, we can regulate based on time, place, and manner. The attorney would have to talk maybe a little more about that. And so, we can regulate speech in a limited way based on the time, place, and manner. So, this would be the manner of speech of flag pole, and it'd be the location on, you know, in a residential zone or in a different zone where that is. So, we do have some ability to regulate, and it's just a matter of how much we want to curtail that speech.
Question I have is, in a residential, or I'm actually contemplating that putting a flag in my home, and it would be from 25 to 30 feet high, what would my requirements be under those circumstances? It's okay. I'll repeat myself. I'm contemplating putting one in my front yard, and it would be 25 to 30 feet tall. What would, just to go over that, what would be my responsibilities in doing that?
So, you would submit a building permit. It just says a permit is required for installation of a new flag pole. And there's no fee for flag poles 35 feet in height or under. So, we wouldn't charge you a fee. We'd make sure that it was, it had a sufficient setback so that while waving, it wouldn't be on your neighbor's property. And John, the building inspector, would take a look at that permit and just make sure that it's not gonna fall down. And that's what we'd be looking at.
Good, thank you. Okay, have we had enough discussion? Is there anybody ready for a motion?
I have a quick question. So, is this retroactive? I mean, you can't impose this law upon somebody that's already got one out?
No.
So, it's kind of a little bit tricky that way.
So, any flag pole that's already existing, is existing, so it'd be grandfathered in. Maybe with number three, the safety hazard, but that would be through a different process.
Right.
That would be like a nuisance that now would come under.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Is the motion for all the changes?
Do we do a motion for this one, and then a motion for the next one?
They're both in the same words. So, present both, okay, present both topics, okay.
So, the other one's a highway commercial transition area. We also had a lot of debate, a lot of discussion with Planning Commission about this one. So, in these two images, you see the two, the only two areas of town where we currently have the S-1, so that's highway commercial, the North Interchange and the South Interchange. You can see that they do have some residential uses surrounding them. I'm up on the North Inter, or the South Interchange. It's somewhat built out where there's already some residential that's abutting it. Same with the North Interchange. And we have some more slides, I'll show that a little bit closer. So, currently, the way our code's written is we have a transition zone, or not transition zone, sorry, a transition area of 300 feet. And within those 300 feet, it's not like a setback in which you cannot build, it's just that there are additional restrictions within those, within that 300-foot area. Some of those restrictions include that the maximum height is one single story. The uses are restricted much more than the permitted, like the breadth of the permitted and conditional uses allowed in the S-1 zone. So, for example, if you had a business that was within that 300-foot area, even though you might have a business that's permitted generally in the S-1 zone, it might not be permitted in a transition area. Some conditional uses might be more broad than the general S-1 area. So, it could be permitted not in transition zone, but conditional in transition zone. Then, as well, some other restrictions in terms of hours of operation, lighting, fencing, those kind of things, or walls, those kind of things. And so, just take a little closer look about, or look at these S-1 transition areas. This is the North Interchange. The main area I was seeing where we'd have development is behind the grocery store. So, you can see that there's already 65-foot or so streets. That's an approximation. That creates a buffer. And then, any development ostensibly on the S-1 side would have a parking lot, some landscape area, before we'd get to a building. So, we wanted to take that into account in visualizing what any proposed code would look like. With the South Interchange, similarly, we don't have too many areas, so I identified a couple here, by the movie theater. In that area, you have the back fence to the road approximately 340 feet. And with Planning Commission, we discussed at length how various proposals for transition areas would affect that area, as well as other areas. And then, on that star on the bottom, we have across the street from Walmart, where you can see what a 200-foot section looks like that goes from the back of the house from, well, from the fence line to that street. So, some proposed language. First of all, general requirements, like a landscape buffer with trees whenever we have highway commercial abutting residential, some sort of barrier wall, whether it's like a masonry wall, or it's a landscape wall, like a hedge row. A little bit of restriction with parking lots, so the parking lot doesn't come right up to the property line, so a 20-foot setback there. Then, delivery areas, we talked a lot about drive-throughs, and we'll get to that, and some other things, like mechanical equipment screening and light shielding. And then, the permitted uses, to expand that to all the permitted uses allowed in the S-1 zone, so we're not as restrictive in that transition area, with the exception that amusement parks, public assemblies, drive-through restaurants would be conditional, just because it would bring additional noise. And we want to make sure that we have a chance to look at how it could impact the neighborhood. So, we pitched, well, what we did as staff is we surveyed throughout Utah and looked at what other cities were doing, and we put them in general categories. One category was to do kind of a step back, where every, so many feet of horizontal distance away from the residential area, you can go up a little bit higher. So, that was one. Another one was to just look at the distance and the max height, and then put a maximum height within a certain distance. And so, currently, we have the transition area of 300 feet. So, we discussed, well, do we keep 300 feet as a transition area, but change the maximum height from one story to two stories or three stories, or something like that? Do we change the transition area? And then, the third option we looked at was something of like a mixed use, where within a transition area, we kind of combine the two and bring them into kind of a mesh of the two. And Planning Commission liked the idea of just a clean cut, this is a transition area, and this is a max height. So, we'd have to calculate it based on how many feet it was away from the fence or whatnot per property, just this is the transition area and this is height. And the numbers that they went with were the transition area of 150 feet, so cutting our current transition area in half, and increasing the maximum height from one floor to 35 feet. Where the 35 feet comes from is the adjacent residential height maximum, which in all of our residential zones right now is 35 feet. And so, however many floors can fit in 35 feet would be how many floors you could have in a transition area. So, it'd still allow a business to come in, and most of the businesses that we discussed that are currently in that transition zone already fit this. Very few of them are taller than 35 feet. So, this would just mean a four or five-story building, if they wanted to come to Payson, they're gonna need to be a little bit further away from where our homes are, so to protect that. So, you see here, so we have the 10-foot landscape buffer, the barrier wall, restrictions on the loading docks. Then, that's the proposed ordinance that was in the packet. Then, oh, I thought I mentioned, we talked a lot about drive-throughs. And so, Planning Commission, with their experience in doing conditional use permits, felt that the big nuisance to neighbors was the noise from the drive-through. And so, the result of that discussion was that drive-through speakers or any noise emitting devices would need to be 65 feet away from the property line, from the transition. And the drive-through windows where people are yelling in their orders, ordering their hamburgers, would need to be 50 feet away. And I think that was the last change that Planning Commission suggested for the recommended approval. So, I think that kind of crashed course in the S-1 transition zone. So, from there, do we have any questions?
I think, one of my questions is that we don't put ourselves in a corner and not be able to develop the businesses that we need to develop. And you're more experienced in it than I, but even at 150 feet, that's quite a distance. So, are we going to limit drastically so what we can attract into business areas such as two blocks off, two blocks up I-15?
Yeah, so, it is a trade-off. We've limited it a little bit. We also protect the neighborhood, and there's a lot of discussion of, within 100 feet, that's a parking lot. We could have the building on the far side of the lot, but the parking lot on the closer to residential neighborhood side of the lot, which would prevent a tall building. Again, 35 feet, when we talk about building height, that's from the midpoint of the roof. So, it doesn't mean like the very highest point of the roof. So, you could still have a three-story building within that transition area. The concern was having maybe a four or a five or a very tall three-story building coming in close to the property line where you have windows looking down and to neighbors and whatnot, and simply saying, if we wanted a really tall building, let's push it further away from the residential area. So, still allow it, it's still permitted in the zone, it would just need more than the 150 foot.
So, we have a developer that wants to build in Payson, the people who did Bars Ice Cream, and they pitched several different ideas to us. If they were to come in and say, "We want to build a business office building," or a hotel, or a convention center, or something like that, would they have enough space to build it right there if they wanted to put, say, a four, five-story building there? Or, like, I'm just kind of curious to know what that, what this opens the door to in real space, because I'm kind of spatially challenged. When you say 60 feet, I don't know what that means unless I see it.
Yeah, so, 150 feet, I don't know the exact width of that lot, but it's not more than, I don't know if Jill knows off the top of her head or anyone else does, I don't think it's more than 200 or so feet wide. So, 150 feet eats...
So, you would be able to put any multi-level building in that area?
If you did, it might have to have a step back, where the front of the building went up to 35 feet, went back, and then at the 150-foot mark, it could then go up a little bit higher. Something like that could work if it is 200, 220, 250, I don't know. I don't know the exact width of it. know, I don't know the exact width of it.
That's the only one that I see a real problem right now. The others, I think there's enough space that they can plan around that.
Yeah, that area was, we didn't talk about that specific scenario, we did talk about Fars Ice Cream coming in and...
Because they...
The speakers right there, the speakers and the lights, and just bringing in that traffic right there.
Right.
Yeah.
I have a few questions. One is, if you look up your star on the north part of the pit, I think that's already down like thirty feet. If somebody wanted to put in an office building there, you wouldn't even be up to the top of the houses, you wouldn't even be up to the houses, so...
Yeah, there's a slope there.
Yeah, so I think we ought to look at something like that, where there's mitigating circumstances that could affect a bunch of office buildings along there if somebody wanted to put a four-story office building, which would be a good spot for that, but it'll not be, it won't fit in our ordinance.
So is it, that's a good question, is it height based off of where the building is built, or height based off of where it is in relationship to the neighboring?
Yeah, so it'd be the building height that's measured under the code, which is from the building, so the top of the building, bottom of the building, ground level for the building.
Then I got something else, too, just down by Payless Shoes, the example you have there, the two hundred feet, if you did the one hundred fifty feet, there's three houses there, and basically they're surrounded by commercial, and it's going to be commercial. We have three houses there, but if, that would limit a four-story hotel going in there if we did this, and if we did this ordinance. So I have some concerns on some of these, if we're putting, trying to put one shoe to fit everything and maybe not taking into account some of the unique areas that we have in some of these areas, so...
What would it entail in court to change the zoning into that, can you put residential in an S1 zone? Is that...
Not, well, won't to.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think you would want to, but I'm just, I mean, looking at that down the road, they go, hey, you know what, we're sitting on prime property, it's worth more without a house on it. Is that something that's easy for them to move into that zone, tear the house down, sell it off, kind of deal?
Oh, so to convert, you're saying like to convert this area into commercial?
Yeah.
It would require a rezone, so that's currently R1. I think this area is going more residential, the area that's zoned, residential right here. And so this will be a residential kind of corridor right there, so, yeah, maybe something could happen here in the future, but I think this area would be pretty stable as residential in the...
I'm just asking for my own educational purposes, so I know what it'll...
Land use is fluid.
Right.
Just because something's zoned R1 now doesn't mean it's going to stay that way into the eternity, because we can always do zone change requests.
So is there a way that we can reword it based off of elevation, like in that spot that Ms. Hylott's talking about?
Yeah, I'm sure we could, we talked about that with planning commission, and what they said is, let's move forward with one that's more clean, and if we have some odd nuanced scenario that occurs, we can address it at that time. We could run it with a zone amendment as needed. It's hard to anticipate the, you know, the strange occurrences that can happen. We don't know how this will develop right now. Like I was mentioning, man use is fluid, we don't know at what point we're going to see this area developed, and so, we could put something in now to anticipate that, or address it when it comes, but currently, with three hundred forty feet and only one hundred fifty foot transition area, you do have the front two hundred feet where you put a very, very tall building. I, I don't know that we're seeing that kind of development pressure right now in Payson, and I'm sure we'd put a neat story building right there.
I think if you were to put that in there as a, as a variance, like you're saying, if it's, let's base it off where the residential is, what if they want to come in and build on top of the hill? It would be the other way, you could only put a five-foot tall building on it if it was inverse, you know?
Yeah, we could put a caveat in there that city council or the director can consider slope or, you know, elevation and modifying maximum heights or something like that.
I just, I got an email today at noon from the hotel trying to get one of these evaluations, and he just, again, expressed, and I only met with Daniel, I don't know what that conversation was, but he just gave me the dimensions on their three-story, four-story, and, you know, they, they preferably want the four-story hotel they'd like to build, and the main structure that's forty-two point six inches, so it wouldn't happen in what we're proposing. It would have to be at least one hundred fifty foot away, and I'm not sure on the, on the Fars Ice Cream property if there's enough, there might be. I know they looked through the three hundred, it was clear again, there wasn't room to do that, one hundred fifty feet, I don't know, did he talk with you about that?
He didn't really talk about the Fars Ice Cream lot, he was exploring some other ones, one that would be within the transition area, and others that are not within the transition area.
And I know they've looked at the one down where that two hundred foot area, but he just wanted to reiterate, those are, he's, he would still have a hard time with that one hundred fifty foot, and put a four-story one. Like Daniel said, maybe you have to tear it, but that's not in their design guidelines, but whether they could go try to design that or what, that, I just wanted to let you know, he did send an email today, there's still, he's still looking, he still would like to build a four-story hotel here in town, it's just, under our current ordinance with the three hundred foot, no way it will happen. A hundred fifty, I think you'd have to get a pencil to it, see if there's enough beyond the one hundred fifty feet, but he couldn't build this four-story within that one hundred fifty foot upper.
I just hate to see prime business real estate limited when we need that kind of development. You know, I understand that the people need to have their, we need to respect their privacy as well, but the problem is they're so close to the freeway and prime, prime real estate that we need to be able to use that as a, as a city.
Well, I think, I think along with that is, like the survey showed, is, we want responsible growth, is what the call has been, and I don't, I just want to make sure that it's done right. I just drove through Cottonwood Heights, and I had never really been there before, and it's in the middle of all sorts of stuff, and it's just a regular neighborhood, at least the part that I drove through. And I kind of envisioned Payson being that to a certain extent, except for on freeway areas, but I, I, I think that's the feel that I get when residents say, we want responsible growth, don't just cram things down to habit, and so, I don't know exactly what that means, I think this is probably a good step, I think three hundred's probably a little excessive, but I would hesitate going much smaller than where we're at. I trust the planning commission, I guess, because they looked at it more than I did.
I think a little bit of what I'm hearing also is, what is prime...
Sure.
You know, real estate for this kind of development? Is it right next to, right, right next to the residential, or is it a little bit more closer to our interchanges? I think that's a little bit of the internal debate that most are having.
Right, well, there's going to be an unfortunate budding up that's going to have to happen, and that's going to be solved in a manner that works out.
What's, what's the balance?
Yeah, so we've, we've got to, yeah, I don't know.
You did mention a hundred feet, was there any exploration of doing, going down to a hundred feet instead of one hundred fifty?
Yeah, so I think the initial from planning commission was two hundred, and then they decided to go from two hundred to one hundred, or one fifty. Trying to remember more of that debate, but it was more between that one fifty, two hundred, they were definitely uncomfortable with the three hundred, and definitely uncomfortable with the one-story cap. Right when they looked at that, they're like, we need to increase the maximum building height, and thirty-five seemed reasonable, I think all the planning commissioners, so that's more or less. There wasn't much discussion on going shorter than that, I think that was concerning to most of the planning commissioners, just based on their feedback, interacting with neighbors, so they felt like one fifty was a big compromise. And I actually didn't pitch that number, that was the number they came up with.
Because one thing I look at is, is, this is our commercial area, there, there is not very much conflict with housing, very few sections, there are just not that many. Yes, it's going to really affect those that are conflicted, but, so I'm just kind of still struggling with the, you know, where to, where to draw that boundary. So, I'm not quite there yet for me personally, I'd like probably go out, step it off and do a little more research, but there, there's only, like, once, once this is in place, and anybody, any residential that comes in around them will already know what the rules and regulations are, so, so I'm just still struggling, trying to make it economic growth, we want economic growth, and then we want to protect the people around it, there's, but it's got to be that balance, and I just don't know where that is personally, so...
So, does that mean that we are going to...
So, we're going to modify it or...
Go ahead, Dave.
Just one other question that was brought up, and it's not on this, it's about the flagpoles, was there discussion about lighting? As far as, can you, can you light, can you have lights on that through the night, was, I mean, was there any discussion on that?
Good question.
I think that was mentioned in the meetings, and that there weren't concerns.
So it does...
We need to provide, yeah, they could light it, it's not perfected.
The flag, US flag code calls for it, displaying the American flag at night calls for lighting.
There are two options, though, you can light from the top down versus the bottom up, which would, would decrease light pollution. I actually just directed two flagpoles within the last three months, one of mine, one at my dad's house, and so they're, they're lighted from the top down, they're kind of a pricey little unit, and when they break, you can't get back to them, but it's another story. It may, it may be beneficial to incite the ordinance for light pollution that has to come from the top down.
Do you have any idea what the cost is?
It's eighty dollars for a solar-powered LED light that fits on top of the pole.
Oh.
So it's not... It's not, it's not super cost prohibitive. Yeah, you're more than welcome to drive mine, look at mine if you want.
But if you're a neighbor...
Yeah.
Seems like it's going to light out.
But that's not...
Lightning can be controlled, either we can put it in, or...
Yeah. So if you're writing a code for flagpoles, you might want to put it in there.
Follow the US code?
So do you want to table this and add some of those things that have been said and bring it back, or do you want...
Yes. Well, I'm Jim, I don't think we have consensus here, so I think we need to look at it.
Okay, it sounds like that's the consensus of the council, the table. Oh, go ahead.
Is there public comment, are we in a public comment section?
We're not really in public, no, I'm sorry.
All right.
I'll make a motion to the weak table.
I would love to hear from you, though, when we're done, yeah.
I'll make a motion to the weak table, this amendment to the Title 19 ordinance. Yeah, to the next meeting.
I have a second. Okay, that would be a roll call vote, starting with county. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
So to remand back, back to staff for the modification, what information would you like from staff?
Well, lighting on the flagpole.
Okay.
With the lighting issues.
I would like to look at maybe a hundred foot, something like that, and step back and see where that puts us from.
Do you want something on the topography?
Then, something with topography, too.
A hundred and fifty feet's not very far, I mean, I have portion of my properties only a hundred feet deep, and to me, that doesn't seem like you'd be very far back from...
Sold on a hundred, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I can bring several aerials, varying distances. I mean, I can look at topography, lighting, anything else?
Well, and I think that the really key area is just that one area between, by Fars Ice Cream, and then beyond that, I don't think there's, like...
Well, the other one, right, where, by Payless, where the three houses are.
Across from Walmart.
Yeah.
Like, yeah.
Well, I think we're getting the same situation up behind McDonald's, you've got all that new residential going in right there, and it's zoned S1, right off that interchange as well.
So by the, behind the grocery store?
No, the other...
Oh, behind McDonald's. Yeah, so I did go onsite with that one, and I listened to the McDonald's menu board, so this goes to the drive-through, from various distances, and gauged how loud it was. They have some enclosures out, like they have a big trash enclosure with a barrier wall, and I went behind that to see how much that affects it. I was surprised how loud the drive-through window was, I could hear everybody's order at, I can't remember the exact distance I was, maybe a hundred feet, I could tell you who was getting onions, onion cheeseburgers, or telling me who was getting what kind of...
The real question was, did it say yanni or laurel?
Yeah.
I didn't say yanni, yeah, I knew yanni, yeah. Yeah, and I don't remember what color that dress was, so...
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, we'll move on to G, German to read the development agency, if I have a motion and a second, we'll do it. So moved?
Second.
This calls for a, well, I guess it just, vote all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Mayor, council, this is, we, this is to sell lot three of Flat H, which was approved by the planning commission last meeting, this is one that we emailed out to, ratifying the, the, sell that lot to, so we, we took last week, and I know it's been, it's been sent to the title company and things move forward, but we need a motion approving that resolution, allowing the, the, I think Mark was quick a little from what was in your packet, but the motion authorizing the sale of two point six five acres of the redevelopment agency property, located approximately fifteen twenty-five West American Way, authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents, ratifying what the, what director or in the RDA write assigned.
I'll make a resolution, I'll make a motion, we adopted resolution five sixteen two thousand eighteen, authorizing the sale of two point six five acres in the RDA, approximately fifteen twenty-five West American Way, and authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents.
So a second?
I'll second that.
And just in talking to Ross, just to clarify, the, the planning commission last meeting adopted Flat H, which has those three lots, and that's a condition of all those three that we've got under contract, so I believe we can move forward because that was approved by the planning commission.
Okay, so the motion is in order that we, that we had, right? And it was seconded, we'll call, it's calls for a roll call vote, Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
Or Director Christel.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, now we just need to go back out of the RDA, out of the RDA, Director, Councilman.
I'll entertain the motion to go out, motion to ground of RDA and back into regular council meeting. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we go to, I believe it's, aye, adjourn to a closed session, motion to go into closed session.
We have a couple of property issues that we need to discuss with you.
Okay, does someone calls for a roll call as well?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Okay.